Good evening, and I am calling the, I'm sorry, August 21st, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Before we begin, thank you for your patience as we got our new toys up and running so that we could see our agendas. And also before we get to our first item, I'd like to recognize our clerk Kylie Kessinger, who is leaving us after today, and thank you very, very much for all of your hard work and keeping us all straight and on task.
It has been my pleasure. Thank you.
All right.
Can I cut my mic off?
And with that, we will turn to the first item on our agenda, which is approval of the July 17, 2025 meeting minutes. Are there any changes? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
It's a move.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Or do you just want a second off of that?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Sorry.
And you were here?
I was virtual.
Okay.
The minutes reflected that.
All right, that's right.
Mm-hmm.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that we approve the July 17, 2025 meeting minutes as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kessiger.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
In all abstain since I wasn't present at the last meeting.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The July 17, 2025 minutes are approved as presented. We now turn to new business on our agenda. Excuse me. Several of the items on the agenda tonight are public hearings. After the staff report is given and the commission has the opportunity to ask questions of staff, I will then open the public hearing. We will first give the applicant the opportunity to make comments about their request, and then we will open up the floor for comments from the public and on Zoom. All speakers should come to the podium at the front and provide us with their name and address. We ask that the applicant limit their comments to 10 minutes and that all other speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The first item is item 3A, Public Hearing in Consideration of a Request by the City of Stanton for a Comprehensive Mass Rezoning of Existing Non-Conforming Residential Uses and Area Zone Business and Industrial and Historic Districts on the South Side. Maggie Roche, Long Range Planner for the City, will present the staff report.
Thank you. We are here tonight to hold a public hearing and consider the comprehensive mass rezoning of 85 properties located mainly in the city's historic districts, the south side, and other areas. The purpose of this initiative is to correct longstanding inconsistencies where properties have been used as homes for decades but are zoned for business, industrial, or other non-residential uses. So many of the residents in our community face a significant challenge. They live in a home that on paper isn't zoned as a home, and this becomes what we call legally non-conforming. This mismatch creates real-world problems for the homeowners. It can complicate their ability to get permits for renovations or additions and can create hurdles when they try to sell or refinance their property. So essentially, the city zoning map doesn't reflect the reality on the ground in those specific areas, and our goal is to fix that. So the solution we are proposing tonight is fairly straightforward, to rezone these 85 properties from their current business, industrial, or higher education districts to an appropriate residential district that matches the surrounding neighborhood, either R2, R3, R3C, or R4. This action will bring the zoning into alignment with the actual historical use of these properties, which provides stability and security for the homeowners. A mass rezoning is not a new concept for Stanton. Between 2012 and 2017, the city rezoned several areas to address this exact same issue. And then more recently, in 2024, the city rezoned 63 properties in Union Town from industrial to the traditional residential development district. And this current proposal follows that same model. So this initiative was undertaken at the request of the Planning Commission, and commission members conducted field trips to review each property in question, and staff has incorporated the commission's feedback throughout the process. We also held a public information meeting on June 11th to ensure residents were informed and had a chance to ask questions. And importantly, we provided an opt-out option for property owners. Of the original 88 properties identified, three owners have chosen to opt out, bringing us to the current total of 85. Please note that one of those opt-outs was not received until after the agenda packet went out, so you all have been provided with the updated information for that one. And that is all I have for my staff report tonight.
All right, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for Ms. Roche? All right, seeing none, I will now open the public hearing. I ask that all speakers begin, as I said, by please stating your name and address. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, but we have no hands raised at the moment.
All right, with that, seeing no one, I will go ahead and close.
There's a guy over here, somebody.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Sheri Ramsey. I'm at 315 North New Street. I'm with my neighbor at 319. Just very quickly, we had a couple of questions just wondering about the implications of changing that many houses to residential with regard to our neighborhood. Does that change any of the rules regarding our neighborhood and the way things are allowed or not allowed because it's all residential now?
Um, do you want to take it back?
So when we, when we were going through this, these areas and compiling this list, one of the things we were looking for is what is the property currently used for? We tried to only identify properties that were built to be houses and have always been used as houses. So the idea is we're rezoning the properties from business to residential in an acknowledgement of what their actual use and the long-term intended use of the properties are. So there should not be a change really to the way properties are used or the parking demand for the street. We don't anticipate any, any issues like that.
Gotcha. The reason I brought it up is because in 2021, we sent, we have a, everybody in the neighborhood signed it on New Street in various areas around. We had almost 90 signatures from people that lived in our area in New Street and around students, St. Francis Church, people that went to the church, lots of people, even some Mary Ballin people, I think, sent a letter, Frederick House sent a letter, very concerned about the traffic on New Street. It is one lane, as you know, road with cars on both sides that allow huge trucks to whiz down them. There's no stopping from the time you turn on Frederick to get down to Coulter Street to stop anybody from going that way. There are yellow lights at Prospect that are totally invisible. One of my neighbors said to me, she can only tell when she's, somebody slowed down for those lights that they're out of town, because anybody that lives in Stanton doesn't slow down to go there. So we have in a 25 mile an hour area, people going close to 50 miles an hour sometimes, and big trucks bouncing down that street. As some of us older folks that like to go out at night, when it's dark and maybe pick up some groceries, it's really dangerous getting out of the car at night when people are running. My husband saw a couple of years ago, a guy trying to get his car in front of the wind of mirror, and a truck go by, a car go by and take the door off, and didn't stop. So we sent a letter to the city manager's office and to Public Works Department, never heard anything back from anybody. So I wrote another copy of the letter with the signatures and also some pictures to show the craziness of letting large trucks turn from Frederick Street onto New Street, where they get, what's the word they use, hijack, or what do they call that?
Jackknife?
Jackknife, thank you. They can't get around. The people from the Frederick House discuss it in their letter where they've had to go out and try to move people's cars to get them to be able to turn. Just a lot of problems with that street and the speed, mostly the traffic, and also the ability to let these big trucks go on the street. So I'd like to present, it's just a copy of the letter we sent in 2001.
I'll let you give that to the clerk, please.
Hopefully, maybe we can, I didn't give it to you guys before, maybe I should have. But I'd love to have some interest in looking into this and be happy to talk to you about it more.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
Good evening. My name's Jack Barber, and I work with a management company that we have several properties that are being studied or impacted by some of the changes that we have that the Planning Commission is going through right now. I just, and I'm coming in a little late on this, I apologize. I was out of, out of town for a good part of the summer.
And before we get too far, can I just give you to give the clerk your address as well?
11 East Beverly Street.
Thank you, please continue.
Anyway, a lot of some of these buildings that are being repurposed or re-zoned, a lot of them have been vacant for a long time. And I was under the impression that if these buildings were vacant, let's say they were used as a home for 15 or 20 years, that if they go vacant for two years or more, then they revert back to their, they couldn't be reused for residential purposes. So I'm just kind of trying to get some kind of clarification for that. Maybe Tim can do that for me.
Sure, so you're, you're correct. These properties that are residential but are zoned business, if they're vacant for a period more than two years, they're not supposed to be used for residential or as single-family homes any longer. The ground floor of the building should revert to some kind of business use. That's one of the issues that has prompted us to, to do this rezoning so that these buildings that were built as homes and obviously intended to be used as homes can now be reused as homes.
So what, how does the, how do you guys interpret that from a legal perspective?
Well, legally, once the zoning changes back to some kind of residential, then they can, they can now be used for residential purposes again.
Okay, so if a particular piece of property has been abandoned for 10 years or whatever, and somebody decides to move back into it, it's already zoned business, are they allowed to move back in there?
If, if it's still, you know, if it's not part of this list and it remains business, they cannot move into it. It has, it has to be a business use.
Well, we're resented from business to residential.
Yeah, and I realize that. I'm just looking at it from, you know, 20,000 feet. I'm just trying to understand, what is your land use policy in terms of if a piece of property is abandoned, it's not being used for the intended use, but it is zoned something else, then what is, what's the policy?
Backing up a step, some of these houses, you know, were used, that are zoned business, were used as residence before current zoning. So they're, what we say, the term is grandfathered in as long as they continually are used as residences. So what, so that's sort of the premise to where you get, if they're not used for that purpose for two years, they lose that grandfather status, and they have to comply with the current zoning laws for businesses.
Well, I, I understand that. What I'm trying to say though is I'm not sure that that's really been adhered to. And, you know, this is maybe not the place to talk about that right now, but maybe I should talk to you, Tim, about it at some point. Because I'm not challenging the rezoning. I think it's great, because I understand the underlying factors that are involved, but there are probably some specific issues out there that I question, just how is the policy being adhered to from a legal perspective?
So are you thinking there are homes that have been vacant and lost, you know, that non-conforming status, and then someone has moved back into them and started using them as a home again in violation of the zoning code?
Yeah.
So I'm sure that happens. It's difficult for us to track that. There's no, no way for us to know when a house becomes vacant, how long it's been vacant. We can use utility records in some cases to try and figure that out, but there are cases, I'm sure, where a house has been vacant and we don't know it, and someone moves back into it, starts using it again as a residence. Unless, unless someone complains about it, there's really no way for us to know what's going on and take any action.
And that's what I was gonna say, I mean, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, zoning violations are triggered by complaints to the city.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just questioning some of, you know, how this implementation is, if you've got, if we're gonna be making laws that they be consistent, and that's what I'm more concerned about is the process.
I mean, zoning code violation investigations are triggered by complaints from citizens.
Okay.
That's across the board, not just for this issue.
Okay, all right. So the city then takes no responsibility for planning violations unless?
Mr. Barber, this is a public hearing on the rezoning of these 85 properties. We'd be glad to talk to you. Staff can talk to you at another time about these other issues.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm coming in late to this, so.
This is not an open discussion back and forth time.
That's fine, okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for raising it.
Please.
My name is Carol Long, and I live at 316 North New Street. I'm here with Sheri Ramsey. So I actually have questions, basically, and maybe these were addressed at that public hearing. I was not able to attend that, so I thought maybe you might be able to answer my questions, and they are, they all have to do with the rezoning. Although I would like to just add something to what Sheri said about the, the traffic problem on North New Street, and I don't know if through the zoning it can somehow be addressed, but another problem that we have is cars constantly, constantly going the wrong way on North New Street, besides speeding. And all of us who live there see it, and we just go like this. We've all seen close calls with children, myself with one of my own grandchildren once. It's really a problem, especially the 300 block of North New Street, which is, you know, and I, maybe the zoning has nothing to do with it, but I, since I have this little platform for a second, as like Sheri, I just wanted to bring that up, the traffic. I wish that we, very much all the residents wish the city would really take a closer look at that.
And before, before you get into your comments, I'll just point out to everyone that the last item, next to last item on our agenda is matters from the public. So if there's something like that, and it's on every month when we're here, so if there's something like that that's not on the agenda, then we give everybody a chance to come up and talk about it then.
That's good to know, yeah, thank you.
So anytime you have something like that, you're more than welcome to come to our meetings.
Perfect. But I do have, one of the things we read about with the rezoning, and maybe I'm not clear about it, the beekeeping. Could you please explain how that factors into this? Again, for those of us in the 300 block of North New Street, which I guess the, the even number half of the street is getting, is being rezoned back to residential, is that correct?
The current public hearing is on the rezoning of 85 properties.
I think ours is one of those.
Okay, but the beekeeping ordinance is item B, so we will discuss that after.
Gotcha.
We, I'm just some sort of conclusion on this matter.
Okay, perfect. Okay, um, then the other one, I do have about, I know two houses that would be at least on my side of the street. I believe they're included in those 85. They may not be, but one is a bed and breakfast, and one had, had in the past been used as an Airbnb. So I'm just curious, as far as the rezoning back to residential, does that affect that type of usage for houses if somebody's using their home as a bed and breakfast or renting out a room as an Airbnb?
So Airbnbs generally are done in residential zoning districts. So it has no, no negative impacts on Airbnb. For a, for a more traditional B and B, those generally are also operated in residential districts under a provision of the zoning code that allows for boarding and rooming.
Okay, okay. And then my final question, which a number of us neighbors who have talked have had, does, does the rezoning in any way affect, those of us who are getting our, you know, who are affected by it, like my own home, for example, does that have, will that affect our taxes one way or the other at all?
That's really a question you should probably ask the city assessor. In most cases, they're already assessing these properties as residential.
Okay.
So this rezoning, in most cases, does not affect assessment at all, but you might want to contact Doug Flynn, the city assessor, to verify that.
Okay, great, sure. And that, that is all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any hands raised online?
No ma'am, we have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, and with that, I will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. Is there any discussion?
On the basis that it would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning of 85 properties as identified in Attachment 1, with the exception of 547 Calvert Street, 507 West Beverly Street, and 708 West Beverly Street, from B1 Local Business District, B2 General Business District, HE1 Higher Education District, I1 Light Industrial District, or I2 Industrial District, to either R2 Low Density Residential District, R3 Medium Density Residential District, R3C Medium Density Residential District, conditional, or R4 High Density Residential District.
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that Planning Commission recommend approval of the requested mass rezoning for existing non-conforming residential uses and area zone business and industrial and historic districts on the south side. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kessiger.
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The rezoning has been recommended for approval, and the matter will be heard by City Council at its meeting on September 11th, 2025 at 7:30?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, here in these council chambers. Item 3B is a public hearing in consideration of a request by the City of Stanton to amend Title 18 zoning of the Stanton City Code to add Chapter 18.156 residential apiaries. The proposed addition will allow beekeeping as an accessory use to a single or two-family dwelling in residential and professional zoning districts. Maggie Roche, Long Range Planner for the City, will present the staff report.
This public hearing is to consider an amendment to the city code that would add a new chapter, 18.156, to permit and regulate residential apiaries. The purpose of this ordinance is to allow beekeeping as an accessory use for single and two-family homes in our residential and professional zone districts, establishing clear and responsible guidelines for residents who wish to keep honeybees. This proposal was brought to the commission at the June 19th meeting, and since then, staff has actively sought and incorporated valuable feedback from local beekeepers. This input has led to improvements in the draft, particularly regarding the fly zone barrier requirements, ensuring that the ordinance is both effective and sensible for those who practice beekeeping. Additionally, at our last meeting, the commission raised two important questions that I'd like to address. The first was regarding the definition of bee. This definition in the draft was taken directly from Virginia State Code. It specifically defines the bee as the honeybee Apis Melphara and genetic, genetic variations thereof. To clarify, Apis Melphara is the scientific name of the European honeybee, which is the species primarily used for beekeeping. This definition applies only to the managed honeybees that beekeepers raise, not to other species like hornets and wasps. And we think that by aligning the states, aligning with the state's legally established definition, we ensure that our ordinance is clear and focused on the intended beekeeping activities. Second, there was also a question about the enforcement ability of the temporary increase in colonies. After consulting with local beekeepers, we want to emphasize that this provision is important for responsible beekeeping, and this is because bees naturally swarm in the spring, and to prevent a large swarm from leaving the hive and becoming a potential nuisance to neighbors, beekeepers will split a strong colony, and this is a proactive measure that mimics natural swarming in a more controlled way. So this proposed 60-day period gives the beekeepers a reasonable timeframe to safely manage and rehome the newer, smaller colonies. So while enforcement is a consideration, we think ultimately including this provision is important to prevent uncontrolled swarms and promote effective neighbor-friendly beekeeping, especially in a residential setting. So in addition to being a rewarding hobby, residential beekeeping supports our local ecosystem. Bees are vital pollinators for our gardens, parks, and the broader environment, contributing to the health and beauty of our city. And this ordinance is designed to support the beneficial activity, ensuring it is practiced in a safe and responsible manner that respects the whole community. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
I had a couple of thoughts. I, I think the, the benefits of beekeeping are, are kind of a no-brainer, and I think, I think it's going to be really beneficial and, and have a lot of upside to it. I was wondering what the considerations were for allowing two-family dwellings? Just, just because of potential conflicts within, you know, a duplex or somebody, if somebody's got bees in the backyard of that corner over there, and I don't, just, just thinking through scenarios. And then, and then also, I understand it, they are allowed at a single or two-family dwelling on a professional zoned parcel. I guess, I guess the question would be, how many, how many potential apiaries could that be on professionally zoned, single-family or two-family dwellings? And, you know, and, and whether or not that professional zoning district has any benefit to beekeeping?
I'll start with your first one.
Okay.
So we did consider that. We, we thought about single-family, two-family, multifamily. We drew the line at two-family. We definitely didn't want to do multifamily. We thought maybe two-family would be okay, but I can understand your concern, so if that's something you want us to consider.
I mean, it makes sense. It was, it was just something I was, I was kind of thinking through as well. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's anything inherently wrong with it. I was just wondering what the thought process was.
Yeah. And then, sorry, your second question. The number of apiaries is regulated by the lot size, so it would depend on how big that lot was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And if I could add something to that, we don't have a lot of professional zoning. What we do have is generally located on East Beverly, in the block between Market and Coulter, so going up the hill coming out of town. Also, Calorama Street is, is professional between Market and Coulter Street. The, if you're going out of town, the left-hand side of Lewis Street is professional from Baldwin out to Churchville, and there's little pockets of professional on Augusta Street and on North Coulter Street. But there's, there's really not that many properties. But I know that there are some properties in those districts that are used for residential purposes, and, and the professional zoning regulations allow for any use in R4 and any of our other residential districts. So there's, there's potential for there to be single-family and two-family residents in those districts that may want to have bees.
That's, yeah, I forgot, there's, there's a lot of overlap between, between that as well.
Professional was designed to be a kind of a buffer between business and residential. So in those, in those areas where there is professional zoning, there, there will be a mixture of houses and professional offices.
Okay, that was, that was all I had.
I have a question. Could we not have achieved the objective by simply permitting apiaries in residential zoning in the interest of simplicity?
I think our concern was that if we, if we make apiaries a permitted use, then it becomes a permitted principal use. So a property could be used specifically for raising bees without any kind of residence associated with it. So we chose to take the route of making it a permitted accessory use to a single-family or two-family residence, to avoid a situation where someone might take a vacant piece of land and use it solely for raising bees.
And what would be the harm in that?
If someone doesn't live on the property, then they're not there to keep an eye on the bees and to monitor the bees. We wanted the situation where someone lived on the property who, who would always be there to, to watch the bees.
I'm not advocating that we ditch the ordinance, I'm just. I'm just always an advocate for simplicity over complication. And I think we should look for opportunities to simplify that code.
Any other comments before I open the public hearing? All right, hearing done. The public hearing is now open. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter, please come to the podium and give address.
Good evening. My name is Martha Gibbons. I live at three-oh-five Baldwin Drive. I think I'm apparently a Scoflop because I have a couple of beehives in my backyard. And until tonight, I didn't realize this was the first permissible. No, I thought we were drawing back rather than giving. I've talked with Maggie. She's been very helpful. And there were just a couple of things I wanted to mention that I noticed. There's a definition of dense vegetation, and it is for evergreen vegetation. And though it allows for shrubbery other than evergreen shrubbery, it calls for a solid uninterrupted screen year-round. Since honeybees are largely inactive in the winter months, this definition might be a little more limiting than necessary. Any shrub or bush, even those that are deciduous, will deflect bee flight in an upward direction. The idea, is the idea to hide the apiary, is that what we're looking for? Or is it to deflect flight? And I'm not quite certain what we're after here. Might it be possible for those who fall under the forty-foot limitation to be given time to comply by planting smaller and much less expensive shrubbery in anticipation of its growth? Or plant deciduous trees that leaf out early? For example, red buds are bee-friendly, leaf out early, and are readily available from the Division of Forestry in most years. Dogwoods leaf out early. There are other trees that would suit this purpose. A sixty-day compliance date could be prohibitively expensive for some people. And then the other thing I noticed was a barrier of four foot, well, a barrier of four foot high would probably set the trajectory of bees appropriately. I think people are trying to get them up to six feet so most of us can walk under them. I'm not sure about that, but if a bush is four feet high, let's say to here, the bee's going to go up and it's going to be out of human range. And I'm not sure if that's the purpose, but I did notice in looking at the city ordinances that other barrier and fence ordinances in the city limit the height to four feet. And we're requesting a six-foot barrier for the apiaries. So there might be a conflict there. I don't know. Let's see. There's a requirement of a hive entrance at six feet if you don't have the barrier. And I'm never going to have a beehive that tall. I'm just saying. Let's see. Signage. Property owner shall place a conspicuous sign. And once again, I wonder if the bees are behind a barrier, do you want the sign to, I don't know what the purpose of the sign is. Is it to let people know their back? Maggie knows that my bees are out there in front of God and everybody, but... So I figure if anybody comes into my yard, they know that I have bees. You know, we might not need the sign. I'm happy to put a sign up, but... And then the last thing, I wondered, and I asked Maggie about this, is it possible to do a permit by rule? I work for a state agency, an environmental agency, and for very small operations, we had a permit by rule so that we wouldn't have to go through applying for a permit and paying for a permit, but just say, if you're in there and you're in compliance and you have fewer than three, that, and there are no complaints, that you would be able to have a permit by rule. Just a thought. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just say that my neighbors all know I have bees. They come and tell me, they come and ask me what they should plant. What do you think your bees would like? So...
Thank you very much. Do you want to sort of run through some of the...
So I think just our first question was about the dense vegetation barrier and whether that was to screen the bees or intended to be a fly zone barrier. And it is intended to be a fly zone barrier. The purpose is not to hide the apiary. And then the other one about the six-foot fly zone barrier requirement, the intention of that is to direct bees upward above average height so that they're flying above people's heads. From other ordinances that I've read from other locality, six feet seems to be pretty standard. I don't know if there's any variation in that. And then the sign, the sign is just intended to alert people who may be out walking in the neighborhood that there are bees there in case someone has an allergy or a serious, yeah, problem with them. So that's the intention of that, is just to alert people that, hey, there's bees here in case, you know, you're allergic.
I'm six foot three, so we're going to have to rewrite this.
Well, they do go a little bit above six foot, like she said. So they start at six feet and they go a little bit higher, so.
Your forehead better be on alert. Put a sign on it.
And Madam Chair, may I add a little tidbit here? I also heard a comment about four-foot fencing, four-foot limits in other places. That is for property boundaries around a yard that's either a side or a front yard. And so that's, since the bees are in the back, there's no conflict between four feet here, no more than four and six feet in the back. So I think you're fine with that.
Words out of my mouth. All right. Are there any other comments? Is there anyone with their hands raised online?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised.
Then I will close the public hearing and the matter rests with the commission.
I have a few thoughts based on Ms. Gibbons, what she was saying, but I like to discuss between ourselves if we could. The first is actually about the dense vegetation.
What do you think of the line number? Do you have line numbers?
Line thirty-three and thirty-four, and then obviously it extends to forty-nine because that's where it talks about the vegetation. Completely understand the thought process and wanting, it's the no-fly zone barrier situation. Is the language, and this is a question for Maggie and Tim as pronounced as anybody, is the language that we're writing written to a point that it would allow somebody to do something different if it was, you know, if they came in with a plan and said, we're going to plant these type of things that might not be evergreens, like, I mean, it's actually sounded like she had a pretty good ideas over there. Is it written in such a way that if somebody came in to apply for their permit with a knowledgeable barrier that they're making but might not be evergreens, would that be allowed?
The other plant?
Kind of seems like it is, but just, you know, I guess, do we want to be so limiting? Or do we want to say, hey, no, you're a honeybee raiser. You have a good plan. Let's implement it, kind of thing. And it's still getting us to the no-fly barrier that we're looking for?
I think the "or" other plants does that. And I also think that this is a new ordinance and there's room for growth. I mean, we amend ordinances all the time.
Sure.
If we get into this and, you know, people come with science and, you know, emotion. I mean, we can look at amending it and making it less restrictive going forward. But I mean, I hate to, I don't want to hold up when we've already done the public hearing.
Totally understand.
When, you know...
It leaves some room for the zoning administrator to make a call.
Okay.
And a determination. And in some cases, we might, we might need to seek some advice from the city horticulturist to determine if that is a dense enough screen.
Okay.
Since he's the expert in plantings.
Perfect. The second thought that I had, and it's a language thing, so this will be right up your alley, Madam Chair. Line forty-six, and I didn't, on a re-read of line forty-six, it says, "All hives that are less than forty feet from a property line must have an entrance at least six feet above ground level." But it doesn't say that that's the only entrance. So you could have a six-foot-high entrance and then put another one at two feet high.
I guess technically, yes.
So again, are we getting where we want to get to, is my only question.
A very valid point.
Mm-hmm. It is.
Would you say must have no entrances below six feet?
I think that's what you're trying to get to.
Yes.
Can we, yeah, I'm sorry, the public hearing is over. Thank you. I mean, the option at that point is to have it more than forty feet from the property line.
Sure.
I take the point of the comments we were getting, but...
And there's a lot of truth to, is, yes, that six feet above ground level means you're probably not maintaining that entrance. However, a honeybee hive entrance gets maintained. But obviously, then you have the option of the fly zone barrier. I'm just, the way it reads, it definitely doesn't...
No, it doesn't do what the intent was of the revision from prior discussions.
I'm sorry. I should have reread that before.
No, I think Maggie's suggestion was perfect that must have no entrances below six feet above ground level.
Or be placed behind a no-fly barrier.
Yeah. So the answer might be that if there wasn't a second entrance, there would have to be a second barrier.
There would still have to be a barrier.
There would still have to be, because it's less than six feet above ground.
I think that was the intent.
This is forty feet from the property line issue, so...
If it's less than forty feet, then yeah, I think we'll get there from here, but...
I also would like to point out here that we did consult with the state beekeeping groups and numerous others about exactly how to do this and how it would work well, and that we had a similar experience several years ago when we passed a backyard hen ordinance so people could have chickens. And we went through quite a bit of discussion about it, and we ended up with something that was very carefully crafted, and we really haven't had any problems with it. But as has been pointed out, we can't amend these if something comes up and it's not really going to work for people. So this is kind of where we're trying to start.
Was there another? Or just those two?
Oh, I think I've caused enough trouble. Thank you, ma'am.
Not at all. I take your points.
I have a question. Have we heard from other citizens that keep bees? Besides what was shared tonight? Just curious.
No, both the beekeepers I've talked to are here. Yeah.
We haven't heard from the original requister.
There are no other comments? Do I have a motion?
Do I need to include this?
Yeah, at the end of the motion.
Okay. Let's see. On the basis that it would serve the interests of public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of an amendment to Title eighteen zoning of the Stanton City Code to add Chapter eighteen-point-one-five-six residential apiaries with the amendment to the ordinance as presented. Now I've got to find where I was. Excuse me. Line forty-six C, "All hives that are less than forty feet from a property line must have no entrances below six feet or must be placed behind a fly zone barrier."
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommend approval of the requested zoning tax amendment to Chapter eighteen-point-one-five-six of the Stanton City Code with the amendment as provided in the motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Mr. Kessiker.
Aye.
Ms. Wiegand.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The zoning tax amendment has been recommended for approval, and this matter will be heard by city council at its September eleven, twenty-twenty-five meeting at seven PM here in council chambers. Thank you all for coming and your thoughtful comments. Okay. Now, turning to item three-C. Authorization to amend Section eighteen-point-one-two-five-point-zero-one-one, exemptions to off-street parking requirements of Chapter eighteen-point-one-two-five, minimum off-street parking requirements to enlarge the core business district parking exempt area by adding properties fronting on the west side of Lewis Street. Mr. Hartless, planning manager for the city, will present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As most of you are probably aware, within Chapter eighteen-point-one-twenty-five of the zoning code, we have a parking exempt area downtown where no property owners, no uses are required to provide off-street parking. The reason for that district is because in those downtown areas, the city provides parking facilities such as the two parking garages, the Wharf parking lot, the old Firehouse lot there on the corner of Baldwin and Lewis Streets. Recently, we had a request from Jonathan Wright, who owns Redbeard Brewing Company and the building that the business is located in, there at one-fourteen South Lewis Street, to expand that parking exempt district. Currently, the western boundary of the district is Lewis Street, and his building, his property fronts on the west side of Lewis Street, so it is not in the district. However, the properties across the street from him are in the district. So he has requested that we amend the zoning code and expand the parking exempt district so that all of the properties on the west side of Lewis Street, between Middlebrook and Baldwin, would be included in that district. Staff has considered this request. We've worked with him to draft some preliminary language. In your packet, I included a map that shows this boundary change and what properties would now be included in the expanded district. Today, I also emailed all of you, and Ms. Taylor handed all of you a map that has that expanded district laid over top of the zoning map. So you can see what the zoning is for these properties that are proposed to be included. You can see the majority of that area is either B-two or B-one. I think there's one property, which is actually the parking lot for Central United Methodist Church, which is known as R-four. But the majority of them are business zoned. So staff has considered this. We do support the amendment, and we have placed it on your agenda tonight asking that you authorize us to continue working with Mr. Wright on this and to schedule a public hearing at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hartless. Any discussion?
I have a question. We had a requested rezoning, I believe, of the school, Old Stonewall Jackson School across from Trinity some months ago, and basically the, whatever the action, we were requested was denied because the owner did not have sufficient on-lot parking, and he was outside of the downtown parking district. I thought at the time, and I don't think I brought it up because it was one of my first meetings, that why can't we just add him to the downtown district instead of making him go out and build more parking? I don't know what had happened to that proposal, but he still would not be in the downtown parking district with this proposal. Even though that building probably should be, it's a downtown property.
So we had a request several years ago from the owner of the property at the time, and that she requested that we...
And then she requested that we amend the parking district so that, that property, the Stonewall Jackson Schoolhouse was, was in the downtown exempt district. And we had so many people come to the public hearing and speak in opposition that planning commission decided not to move forward and.
Because they lived nearby and they thought they'd be squeezed out of their parking, I guess.
They thought they would lose all the parking on there. So that, that proposal failed. And so this time, Mr. Wright is asking only to add the properties on Lewis Street and not, not to include anything other than those properties.
And, and is the red on the map that you all handed out today and was included in the packet? Is that the existing downtown parking district?
That's the zoning.
I know that's, that's what I thought, but are they the same?
The red, they're not the same. The red is B2 general business zoning. The, the blue outline.
That's an additional map that wasn't in our packet.
Right, yeah. Okay, yes, I see. Thank you.
And I also see it sort of as a natural, because at first I was like, oh, but then I actually went through and looked at each of the, I don't know if anybody else has done that. And there's a lot of churches and some houses and as far as actually increasing the parking, I don't see a lot of that because, I mean, there's vacant lots and churches and I think this right here down here is the only business. And I sort of also saw it because if you scroll down on the map, you know, it makes that loop along Middlebrook towards Lushba Street, like it seems more of a natural extension and, and to include that business.
So are churches excluded from the parking requirements?
When, when they're in the district.
I should know that, but I don't.
Only when they're in the district. If they're not in the downtown exempt district, then they are required.
So do you have to park on the east, eastern pews, the Trinity Church to, to park in the business district without and be within the code? Because only half of Trinity Church is in the new district, the new portion of the district.
No, it's, it's, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go to that extreme.
Are you sure?
Try to enforce it.
Well, I'm just, I think I'm suggesting that these lines are arbitrary, that they're not.
For those?
They don't make any sense and that, that those two blocks of Beverly Street should be included in the downtown parking district. The block that Trinity's on and the one across the street from it.
So the, the block that Trinity's on would be included. The green line's a little bit of a misnomer because that does say fronting on the west side of Lewis Street.
Right.
So it would include the entirety of that property. I think would be reasonable.
And the label up here at the top, the 201 address is Central United Methodist and the 24 behind it there, the block that's north of it is actually the parking for.
Yeah, but Trinity fronts on Beverly Street. It doesn't front on West Lewis.
That's right.
But, but it has frontage on Lewis Street.
It does, because it's on a corner.
Because the, you know, when we talk about frontage from a zoning standpoint, we're talking about the street, not the, not the actual orientation of the building.
But it's also worth noting that both of those churches would be grandfathered in. They don't meet parking requirements.
But if we ever want something to be done with that school, I think it needs to be included in this parking district.
Well, that was definitely, I mean, I don't know why the application didn't move forward, but that was just going to be an expensive retaining wall to, to do the necessary parking.
That was going to be, that was prohibited.
You're talking, you're conflating two things. The one that Tim was referring to about seven years ago was when we actually looked at that property specifically to change it. And then more recently, we had the, the proposal where the owner wanted to sell it and the, he had a buyer with an option who came in and asked to have the.
He had a plan to provide.
Yeah, he had, and he had plans and there was some questions about whether he could do it or not. And we wanted to get more information and then he withdrew that application, which is what happened to it because he was.
Is that what?
He wasn't going to be able to get an answer before the option ran out.
The background on the original parking adjustment request seven years ago for the Stonewall School. Was that incorporating the entire side of Lewis or just an extension down West Beverly to grab those two?
That request was to move the district west all the way to Church Street.
Okay. Double what?
Double what this one is, yeah.
So the, I guess I got a few questions about this in, I'm sorry. Just a few questions about this is, so the applicant is, is, is owner of Redbeard. What's, what's the catalyst for him wanting this? I guess is the first question.
And before you answer, just so there's no confusion in the audience, our vice chair had a prior obligation and is going to be leaving us, but she had informed us of that ahead of time. So just so.
I'm sorry if I talk too much.
Not at all.
No, no problem with the talking. I would have loved to have stayed, but can't do both at the same time.
So the, the owner, Mr. Wright is looking at his options for, for further development of that property. But to do anything, he's going to need to address parking.
Sure. So and I guess incorporate, instead of just hitting that block, that's why we're extending it up Lewis as well. Why not go all the way up Lewis to Churchill Avenue then? Why, why it sort of arbitrarily stops there at Baldwin?
Right now, the northern boundary is the center line of Baldwin Street.
So this would line up with the existing northern boundary?
It would.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Jessica. Then the third question is, currently, we have some parking lot issues downtown. This, I think we're all well aware. Adding more properties to the exempt status feels like it would add more strain to the parking lot situation that we already have. I know with the, the Baldwin Street lot is, is always full to be fair, but that, that's tiny. But you've got obviously the, the parking garage here. The wharf parking lot is, as we know, is, is having its troubles. And, and the, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's still within 400 feet, but the Johnson Street Garage does feel like a, a decent walk over to these properties. So i- is this a good time to be adding to, to our, our downtown parking?
That was, that was, I had a similar question of, of, you know, future development of any of these properties. And, you know, if, if a, if a high traffic user wanted to redevelop one of these things, then, you know, then actually where, where would people park?
Right.
The new wharf parking. So I think first, once the wharf parking lot issues are resolved, there are always extra spaces in the wharf. There's always extra spaces in the Johnson Street Garage. So we, we have parking that's still available. It may not be quite as close to where people want to go, but there are, there is parking downtown. That's, that's not, it's not always full. The other thing is if, if we're going to have a downtown that, that is vibrant and, and, and utilized by the citizens, we, we need to have businesses in these buildings. And, and these properties are generally small. The building usually takes up the majority of the property and in most cases, there aren't ways for people to provide parking on site. And the only choice for a reuse of the property is to exempt them from providing those on-street parking spaces. I mean, those on-site parking spaces.
And even when you look, I mean, because the churches all have some of their own parking anyway, and as the councilman pointed out, are grandfathered in. But when you get up to like 201 through 124 and you get into some houses, like some of them are even like sitting back from, they have parking lots.
Right.
So I, I had the same, and I kind of did a deep dive into it and I don't know.
So if the goal, and I, and I, I hear you about the goal of having a vibrant business downtown district. And I'm trying to, the red and the purple and the magenta, I, I'm sorry, they're running together. We're including all of the business at the down, I, I guess it's the, on the southern end of, of Lewis. The churches are purple. Okay.
Not all of the churches are purple.
20, okay, with 24 West Frederick, what color is that supposed to be?
R4.
It's R4 and then you hit some business up there on the, between Frederick and Baldwin block. Is that, is that?
And most of those are single-family residences now, right?
I guess the only.
They are. If, if you, if you like, I can go through it. So you've got there at the intersection with, with Middlebrook and Lewis, you've got Sunspots. That's zone B2. Then moving north across Federal Street, you have Redbeard Brewing, which is zone B2. Then the property north of that is owned by Chip Clark and I don't know what's in there now, but it's, it used to be Dodd Distribution. And that's B2. And then you've, north of that is the parking lot that Trinity Church owns. That's also B2. Then you've got, on the other side of Johnson, you've got the whole block is Trinity and that's B1. And then McCrossing Beverly, you've got Central United Methodist Church. That's B1. And then just to north of them is their parking lot, which is on the corner of Frederick and Lewis. That's R4.
Okay.
Then you cross Frederick and you've got Second Presbyterian Church. That's B2. And then just to the north of that is a single-family home where Lacy, Lacy King owns that home. Then you've got an alley and then the north side of the alley, the next two properties are, are both, I believe, single-family homes.
Okay.
And then you're at Baldwin Street.
So, so realistically, I mean, the two parking lots could get redeveloped, but otherwise probably minimal redevelopment, true redevelopment's happening.
All, all of these properties are located in historic districts. And it's very unlikely that, that these buildings would be demolished.
I think, I think 110 is the only one that could potentially see something in the future.
And it's really in the same situation as Redbeard, that it takes up the whole.
They have no parking.
So what then, I guess the last question I'm going to ask is what's the building that it's, it's on the Baldwin to Frederick block behind the 124, 122, 116 labels that it fronts Fillmore?
The big building there? That's the phone company.
Yeah.
Phone company? Okay, because I was only gonna, my next point was going to be if the goal is to get the businesses thriving, do we want to include that whole block since that's all of his own business? But if it's the phone company, maybe it doesn't matter.
And they do have some parking there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the time and clarification.
Sure.
We actually have one comment, so. From a comprehensive plan perspective, we've been going through the update process and we've held two public meetings so far. And one common theme that has come up when we ask people what they want to see in the city's future is they say less car-centric and more pedestrian-focused and they want to see more improvements to pedestrian facilities. So I'm not sure that may have an impact.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I mean, I'll say I'm, I'm in favor of this. I had already sort of done this, what Tim just did. We had done that earlier in the week. I'd asked, I had the same concerns and after I looked at it more closely, I thought this was a good natural progression out without too much impact on parking. I think when you jump over another, you know, if you move that same progression out again, we might be having a different conversation and I think that might be too much.
I'll just share full disclosure, Mr. Wright reached out to me to kind of talk through this and I agree. I think using the center line of a street is arbitrary, especially when so much of the property that fronts the street is commercial. So I would just feel like the lot line between residential to commercial would be more, would make more sense than a center line of a street.
And then, and then, you know, how it, as I said, how it sort of curves down and has that tail down there, it sort of makes sense to include sunspots. So, you know, it's, it's double whammied.
Well, the properties on the south end of Church are also commercial, I do note. And I'm right.
The, the little shopping area there where Crispo Coffee.
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, and that's part of the district now. There's, those properties are specifically named by address as, as being in the district.
But over on Church, that's
that, that exhibit just doesn't go down that far.
Yeah.
It cuts it off. We, we were trying to zoom in to show the subject area and we had to cut off.
That's more focused on what is changing as opposed to what this is, this is the, how, where we are currently with the changes.
So I wonder whether the line should be Church Street and Fillmore, not the west side of Lewis. And once again, if, if we don't resolve the parking situation, we're going to end up with an abandoned building at the old Stonewall Jackson School, I think. Eventually, I mean, it's probably hard to sell now.
So I think one, we didn't advertise for that and that's a huge change and I, I couldn't support that at, at this juncture. I think it would lead to be looked at more extensively.
All right, well, I'm not going to hold it up.
That's just my two cents.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
On the basis that it would serve the interest of public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, I move that planning commission authorized a proposed amendment and direct staff to schedule a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
All right. It has been moved and seconded that planning commission recommend authorizing the proposed amendment and direct staff to schedule a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Kessinger.
Aye.
Mr. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Proceeding with the proposed amendment has been recommended for approval. And we'll look to see that back at a future meeting. All right, item 3D, consideration of an amendment to the planning commission bylaws to update the remote participation policy. Mr. Hartless, planning manager for the city will present the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Virginia General Assembly has made some changes to state law regarding remote participation policies for public bodies and quorums. It went into effect July 1 of this year. The current policy of the planning commission needs to be updated to reflect those changes. So in your packet, I have included a draft update to the bylaws, which includes the language from the Virginia Code, section 2.23708.3 that states if a member is electronically participating due to a temporary or permanent disability, medical condition or caregiving duties, that's described in the statute, then the member's remote participation shall count toward the quorum as if the member is physically present. So that change needs to be incorporated into appendix four of the bylaws, which is our remote participation policy. So we've placed this on your agenda tonight and asked you to approve these draft bylaws.
Okay, and then just as a point of clarification for everyone, we vote on this and make the decision. We're not making a recommendation to council on this.
That's correct. This is totally, totally within your realm and it doesn't go to council.
Actually doing something.
We're always doing something. We get the final say for once. Comment? Discussion?
Just to be extremely clear, that it, in order to count towards the quorum, your lack of being here has to fulfill, I mean, it's basically has to be health-related, not I just didn't feel like coming tonight.
Right, right. It has, it has to meet these, these categories.
Then that's it. That's.
That's it.
You got it.
If you're on vacation. If you're on vacation, it doesn't count.
Okay.
But if you're sick, it does.
But you were on-
What if you're sick on vacation?
But weren't you on vacation when you participated remotely?
I was, I was at the hospital because my father was- Although, so actually, it's a question, it wasn't my medical condition and technically the nurses were giving care, but-
And this doesn't exclude anyone from participating remotely for reasons of travel. It just means you can't count towards the quorum for the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? If not?
Madam Chair, I move that Planning Commission adopt the amended bylaws.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Planning Commission adopt the amended bylaws. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hutchinson?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Kessaker?
Aye.
Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, it has been approved and that ends new business and we now, I'll just, we have a no old business, correct?
No old business.
And no other business.
No other business.
Then would you please, under item 6, give us an update on actions of City Council since the last meeting? If there are or any that affect us?
We have not had any items on the council's agenda since the previous meeting.
All right. At this point, we'll turn to matters from the public. Do you have anything you would like to discuss with us, sir? You stuck around with us till the bitter end.
Welcome, come back soon.
Any hands raised?
No, ma'am, we have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Well, the next Planning Commission meeting will be September 18, 2025, here in this room. And with one final thanks to our clerk for his service, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's adjourned.